Welcome everybody to the Village of Washville Planning Board's regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. We begin with a pledge of allegiance. Even though this is our second meeting, it's our first in-person meeting with you here. So Happy New Year to everybody. Hope you all had a good holiday break. And you're all safe and healthy. Also want to welcome our final volunteer and member, Tom Gilde, to the planning board. We now have a full board before you. So our first agenda item has been rescheduled. So we are going to go to item number four. Applicant is D L Prisod C O Barota Realty LLC, two Locust Street. Application for site plan and subdivision, section block and lot one fourteen dash one dash twenty-six point two-two. I non-nuisance industry zoning district. Proposal includes subdividing the subject property into two fifty-one thousand seven hundred eighteen square foot parcels and seeking approvals to construct a twenty-four thousand eighty-three square foot warehouse on each lot for a total of two new warehouses. Today we have Mr. Morgante representing the applicant.
Good evening. My name's Michael Morgante. I'm the engineer representing this particular application for the planning board. It's been a while since I've been here for this project. The applicant has decided to kind of change direction slightly as it relates to this project and kind of scale it back as shown for whatever his economic reasons might be. And having said that, I think it's been since it's been a while since I've been here. I think it probably makes sense. You may give a generic overview of the project. You can probably even connect some of the prior work that's been done and approvals that have actually branched into the planning board in the past. So the business, one of the first businesses, Oral Chemicals, is actually located near the corner right there of Nicole Street and Howlett Drive. That was like the original foundational warehouse building there. And then what happened is over the years, there's been additions. And most recently, if you look on the cover sheet here, just to the west of the subject site that's being planned right now, you'll see another storage building right there that's actually also in the same ownership as this project right now that's before the board. So you've got like three contiguous properties that are individualized. They're standalone tax parcels. However, they're all owned by the same owner. They currently do have access connection between the first two parcels. And if I'm not mistaken, when I was here last before the board, which was quite some time ago, there was concern and discussion that we could continue that connection so that we could have interior traffic circulation, which would reduce impacts to the local roads. And so at least the very least, this plan that you see here before you does incorporate that. We are seeking to connect driveways between the parcel just sort of west of this. What you see before you on sheet two, which is the site plan sheet, is essentially an approximately twenty-four to have a square foot storage building. We are in the I-zone. Generally speaking, we conform with the zoning. I know there's a couple of dimensional things that I've got to fix on the plans that shows there might be some deficiencies, but those will be revised and we will end up complying with zoning setbacks for this. So you have a twenty-four thousand square foot building that is essentially located on the western side, western portion of the site. You've got pavement that pretty much surrounds the entire building. You've got some angled parking to the, to the north. And you've got essentially like an access roadway to the south and east and west of the building. There's a loading dock that's proposed in the front right corner of the building. It's about fifty feet deep, kind of modeled similarly to the one that's existing on the parcel that's just to the west of us. And you can see there, I've got notes where we're looking to connect drivers in locations.
No, the floor.
Oh, I brought my stuff.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. We couldn't find the hard copies in the office, so I didn't know.
John, you might can share one. Table's close to the kitchen.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll reset and I don't put it fine up. Thank you.
No worries. I'll sit on this side and we can strangle the plans between the two guys. He doesn't bite. There, lean back. So yeah, so what we're looking at here is again, we'll probably have what we call like a WB sixty-seven. It's about seventy-five foot long truck that you probably access the site. I've prepared turning diagrams to kind of show the access points on the subsequent sheets. There are, there are some things that need to be adjusted with those. We did receive Mr. Dexter Sims' comment letter and it was well received. And we will make those adjustments that are noted on, on his comment letter. We did do some, some soil testing on the site. Soil testing was done in the back of the building on the north side. The soils along that back corridor between all three properties are all very, very similar. You have a sandy gravelly soil with a certain groundwater depth. I forget what the elevation is, like you have here, five, six feet at least. We'll grade soon.
Is it a box by Tom's destiny?
So we have a. I'll take, I'll take one back then.
There we go. Yeah, there you go.
Tomorrow they're like, where'd that go?
Where'd it go? Yes.
There's a, there's a preliminary grain plan put together, just like in a concept standpoint. It's worth noting, the site does sit in plug zone. I believe the plant elevation is three or four, if I'm not mistaken. And we will be filling this site a little bit, but we're trying not to fill quite as much as you have in other sites. So I think we're using up our compensation for filling the whole foot of the facility.
What was that, a dual bracket? You kind of fill the plant as much as?
Not as much as the, as the first two sites to the, to the west of us. That's at least a game plan at this stage of the process. So, so I mean, from a generic standpoint, you know, essentially it kind of works out. I have to discuss with the applicant what they want to do with the actual existing spinable building. Because as it's shown right now, access wise, some trucks that come in, it's obviously kind of in the way. So we'll see how we end up either relocating entrances or maneuvering certain things on the site that allow us to gain that dual entrance or access. Well, we're early yet, so I don't have a landscaping plan or a lighting plan for you because I have to try to work out all utilities, drainage, grading, stuff like that first to make sure all that stuff works out, fully gated to those sections of, of the, of plans. I think that's pretty much it. At this point, the board has any comments for me and/or they would like to go through the comment letter that John provided, if you can.
I just, from what you read initially, the project has changed. There is no longer a proposed subdivision. This is a single building being proposed on an existing lot. So it's just a site plan application now, not a subdivision application.
Just a note to the stormwater system that's proposed will be below grade. It'll be beneath the parking lot like the other ones have been also.
So I assume this building is going to look substantially like the one just northwest of it?
Yeah, we'll prepare architectural plans once we've got. I need to finalize the dimensions of the building as it relates to the development of plans. I mean, it might shrink a foot or two, it might gain a foot or two, but we will certainly provide more plans and elevation views. And we'll, we'll keep it in the, you know, seeing the characteristics of the other buildings. I think they fit the character of Washington. I think they've been well received by Washington. So we'll, we'll look to try to maintain that look.
On the previous appearance for the plant, project before the board, some of you have seen, there was two buildings, basically what you're looking at. And then there was an additional one located to the east. The biggest concern at that time was truck access to get into the buildings. There really just wasn't room to turn anywhere on-site to get into the buildings. So the interconnection of this parcel with the adjacent parcels, it creates additional room for them to turn. It's also going to make it a lot easier for, there's been complaints in the past about trucks entering from one location and complaints from Howlett residents in general. This should alleviate that because a lot of the traffic can be on-site. So the cross easements would allow for that to happen forever, regardless of whether one of the properties were sold or if it stays all under the current owner's ownership. The turning diagrams that you have on the last couple of sheets of the plans, they show that truck traffic is still going to be somewhat tight. The loading dock is proposed on the front of the building. To enter into that loading dock, a truck is going to have to pull, pull you out into Howlett and back up from Howlett into the loading dock. And that's not illegal. There's nothing saying they can't do it. It's certainly not a preferred. But he does have that situation on the other building currently exist. So that's something I wrote, just your board should discuss. We do have new members since the last application. And that would be an important one for the applicant tonight to get some feedback from you as to your opinions of.
Personally, it's funny because I was actually going to talk about that because I like riding my bicycle around the village. It's one of the things that we practice. And a lot of times I notice for the original building, when trucks are waiting, if there's a ready truck in the loading dock or something like that, they'll queue up on Nicole Street there and it causes a lot of jam ups because they're kind of sitting in the middle of the road. I noticed in the last warehouse space that was built, you guys expanded Howlett Drive to come directly up to their fence line rather than it being like a curbing direct up the street or grass. Something like that can be done here also, limit that grass and just make the, you know, road go straight up to that. So that can be used as a truck queuing area rather than trucks waiting on the roadway that wait off the side adjacent to the property.
How recently have you seen the trucks lined up on Howlett?
Uh, two days ago.
Okay. Part of previous applications, there was a lot of resident concern. They don't want the trucks on Howlett. And the last site plan application included a lot of measures intended to prevent that. Apparently that has not fully taken. But having the interconnection of all the sites, we could look to force them to queue on-site rather than on Howlett. We can work on measures to do that, but we were specifically trying to avoid creating that situation.
That was the purpose for the first approval. That's why we need the connection there. So honestly, I'm not sure why that's happening. I'm not sure, like, very well often it's happening. I mean, I visit the site quite frequently now myself. And over the years, since we did do that, that parcel right next to us on the west, I, I've noticed trucks inside the site queuing more than not.
Yes, I noticed it too. It's still on occasion, not on Howlett, but I noticed them queuing up on Nicole Street waiting.
Yeah. I mean, one thing I'm going to suspect is potentially there might be a truck looking to get to the second site that might be blocked by a truck from the first site moving federally. I mean, there just could be some of those scheduling issues. But I'll, I'll talk to the applicant and see if there's some feedback from him on that. But I mean, if it's operated properly, it should work. That is the whole purpose. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of trucks queuing inside this site at this point. And if we add a third site, it's going to provide even more queuing line.
Actually, it looks like they're putting some fill-in on that side already.
So that, the applicant also owns the property that was, I guess, formerly the propane station over there? Is that Yankee or Coleman, suburban, one or the other? That site has been graded over the past year or two. They've actually utilized, I guess, shale that's underneath there, kind of removed it, crushed it. And they're kind of storing it on the site. I don't know if that's actually going to be used as additional base material, building the site up. But it'll be addressed either as a part of the material requirements for the site or it'll be removed, one of the other.
Permitted uses for the building or intended use right now?
It's similar to what we were approved for last time. It's, it's really pretty much a storage business. I mean, you guys are most likely aware of how that business operates. It's a fragrance and flavor company. A lot of the manufacturing and whatnot, processing occurs in the first building. That's what that approval is for. These subsequent buildings are really just for storage and materials, nothing more.
I personally received two complaints about the odors coming from the existing building. Are there any additional controls planned for this new building?
It's only, it's going to be storage containers. I mean, they'll be closed to storage containers. So I don't think there should be any odors emanating from this building. It should operate similarly to the one that was recently approved.
The owner in the past has been pretty open. If the board is interested, he has arranged tours of the facility so you can see what it is he's doing and how he does it.
We can look at, I said, it's a problem. Just so, so we're dating back a long time ago, two thousand, somewhere in two thousand and five, two thousand and eight. We were before this board for the original approval. I can tell you during that time, we had done an air study. We had done like a noise study. They had put in a lot of filtering systems in the building. You know, it's a difficult situation because we have to open and close doors to get in and out. You know what I'm saying? So sometimes you've got a delivery, they actually, when you go there, you'll note that they have a plastic, they're plastic strips, clear plastic strips. So that while we're loading and loading, he follows, saying we're doing the best we can to maintain a covered opening. It's not perfect. There's no way to make it that. Like, we even went to those measures and tried to make the best of the situation, realizing that, you know, there is residences right around the corner. But they do have, and you'll see this when we continue to report facility, they do have air purification systems in there. He's got specific rooms where they're mixing vanilla, you know, those things. So there's like a vacuum system that essentially takes the odor and any of the particulates up. He's got a scrubber to try to clean the, the air and then that's discharged to the room. So again, it's, you know, it's difficult to make it perfect, but they've taken really great measures to make it the best that they can.
The fact that he stores chemicals here, processes chemicals here, and the air issues necessitated him getting a D E C permit for the original operation. As part of the last round of review for the, the previous building, they provided copies of all the documentation of their current status with the D E C. At the time, everything with D E C was in order. There was no complaints from them. They confirmed that they were still in full compliance with the permit. That's information that you could ask for to bring it up to date now, a couple of years later since that was certified.
And as with respect to safety and fire control, are the materials that are stored, are they kept as a record of any dangerous or hazardous materials stored?
Yeah, he's got, he's got, you know, M S D S sheets on everything. It's, I think it's required, if I recall correctly, the fire department actually in Washington, a lot of that, yeah, and so he's got that in a clear location that the department's aware of. Just so they're aware, I mean, he gets also like routinely inspected by a D E A and other agencies like that for making sure that he's maintaining whatever requirements are required from those agencies. So he's, he's scrutinized on like many different levels for many different things.
I think you meant F D A.
Yeah.
We hope it's not the D E A.
We're hoping it's the D E A, yeah.
Some homeland security in there.
Yeah, what's going on too, yeah.
If you have emissions, you'll be covered out, but they just keep looking at you.
I'm sorry, what was it?
If you have emissions from the building, every outfit agency is looking.
Yeah.
Well, there, there are chemicals which are fire concerns. So they do get inspections specifically for that. I know that the buildings do have rooms constructed specifically for that storage.
Does he do hazmat manufacturing there? It can't speak explosion proof?
I, I, yes. I don't, I couldn't, I'd be lying to you if I told you the exact chemicals and what is happening.
If he has an XP role, then he does explosive.
That would be a better question for the applicant when you do a tour of the facility.
So I know you don't have a landscape and lighting plan yet.
Not yet.
But if the board wants to discuss our comments and give some feedback on what we would expect. I know last time we talked about, I think Rich brought it up, when the trucks come in and shine the light on the backs of the houses on Main Street. Is there a plan for that?
If I, if I recall correctly, we were talking about maybe having some fabric wall on the fence or some type of screen that would provide that, that protection to the neighbors. Privacy, privacy labs, you know, something along those lines.
Cars and trucks. And I, I went through there again a few nights ago checking out the odor issue that I was advised of. And I noticed that the light on the building in the evening, especially on a clear night, really does extend out into the homes along Main Street. So moving forward with this next building, I'm hoping that we can do something better. You know, maybe put the lights on poles and shine it on the building as opposed to have the lights on the building shining out on the ground and trying to miss the houses. Those backyards were pretty well illuminated.
We can look into that. I'll make sure that whatever the poles, I mean, just due to the limited area on the site, sometimes the wall packs, there's certain times you can't get away from it because there's nowhere else to put them. But we can make sure they're fully shielded and potentially tilted also so that we can avoid that.
With regard to setting up a tour, Stephanie, is this something that we would have to notice as a public meeting if we're all there? Or do we need to arrange to be there without warrant?
So you, are the workers actually modern way? We could notice it, but actually, we wouldn't notice it because this would be considered a fact finding. When you're not working, fact finding mission, mission. So the board would not be allowed to discuss, obviously, anything with each other other than like, oh, watch your door, hold my, you know, hold the door or ask questions to the applicant. But I, my understanding then, I can, I would like to really establish, but my understanding for a fact finding site visit, there would be no, no need to notice it to the public. And in fact, oftentimes due to safety concerns, you, you wouldn't want members of the public to show.
Just wanted to make sure if we're going to reach out to the applicant, we know how to.
Oftentimes, they do, you know, you might have to do it in two tours anyway just because it's a dual purpose of between the board members, but.
You know, we're interested in that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Absolutely. I can, I can, I'll give, I'll give the call tomorrow and let them know that there's some interest and I'll have them communicate. We should have a communicating if we have a chance to hear actually.
Yeah, you can, well, actually, we were going to discuss that. Because we received the submissions late, because you submitted them on time per our requirements at Village Hall, but there was nobody at Village Hall to do the distribution. So just moving forward, if you can make sure on all your applications before this board to see C and D and John and the chairwoman.
Would you want direct contact?
For receiving information for deadline for meetings?
Okay.
She does see the agenda. Please, would you do the agenda?
Right.
So I'll send you an email, Mike, so that you'll have both addresses.
Sure, that's fine.
Perfect. But that means that you can, you can contact this group and then I know the chairwoman will probably reach out individually to each member to coordinate.
Sounds good. Now, just reversing back to the truck queuing thing again, the other building you guys did recently, Howlett Drive is actually the asphalt has expanded up to the fence line of the property. I think on this one it would be beneficial as well, especially if it's a, I mean, I'm not sure with the, you know, future proposal or if the other lot was split and if it was sold or rented down the line. You don't know what their intentions or logistics are for the building.
Yeah, could you go over that one more time?
On the last one that you guys did, you actually expanded Howlett Drive, the asphalt edge.
Yeah, I heard you say that. Sure, I heard you correctly. Yep, we can do that. It's not a problem.
I said, that is, because I said the big thing wasn't, I wasn't so concerned about trucks queuing on Howlett, especially this area of Howlett, that road in the left is actually the last of residential. Then after that is nowhere residential there. But on Nicole, there is a very tight street. There is nowhere for the trucks to wait, at least here, especially with the side road expanded. Trucks can easily fit in there and wait if they, you know, if they do have to.
And if I'm able to do that, I'll have a lot more room for trucks to, so that would probably satisfy a lot of those issues.
And if you also, you know, sending the fence there so that you can get a fire truck up closer, et cetera, stuff like that.
Yeah, we can look at that as well.
As you go down further towards the intersection of Howlett and Locust, there's a pretty deep swell there. I don't know how, well, okay. I know it drains a lot of water that keeps to come off those properties.
It's been cursorily addressed on this plan set, but as we go through, it'll be a full drainage design and we'll be going through all of that.
The railroad property, does that come into play with anything that's happening with them?
Hmm, not that I'm aware of.
They abut the railroad property. As part of a previous project, the owner agreed to clean that entire swell out on the railroad property. It's not his property, but he did agree to go in and maintain it to improve the flooding situation. And he also reset one of the drains lines under Pelican Road. It's not, with the presence of the existing gas lines and water lines, we couldn't get the ideal fix, but he did what he could. And then he also, on his own, contacted the neighbors on the other side of the railroad and neighbors that were interested in working with it. He raised their backyards. So he did as part of last project, go to the railroad property and beyond to make drainage improvements.
Okay. So based on the story we have here, my recent site visits, we would probably seek, there's, there's a little bit of an existing drainage system here near the northeast corner of the property where it crosses over on Locust Street. There's a couple of catch faces over there. The paving actually goes under the road and it comes out the other side. That's kind of a natural drainage discharge point for the site. Most everything collects in that one spot and continues that way. So that would be my goal is to have something subsurface. And if the elevations work out, we'll be able to, we'll be able to get to that as our connection point for the discharge of any drainage from our site.
And what he was talking about is there's, if you go across Howlett Drive between where, was that Brookside Brannys would be and Heights of Columbus, there's actually a swell between those two things as well.
Probably, yeah. It's, it's a bit of a low point there. So it's almost at the intersection of, it's closer to the intersection of Locust and Howlett, if I'm not mistaken. And it's, it's even shown on the plan, you can see the depression there. I mean, we could look at if there's an issue, if we wanted to raise that or fix that. I'm not, I wouldn't, I don't have an answer for you right now as to what the solution is, but we could certainly, certainly take a look at it.
Well, I was saying that that can open up sending up water in two different directions rather than all just concentrating in that one area.
Thing is, I'm not aware where this goes over here. That's just a, most of the things we've got stuck. we want to stop.
Something out here, I'd have to look to, we can't really think about maybe running something.
Hmm.
I don't know, it's a figure, I don't...
What's, who's here? I mean, came from an argument, I don't know what that is.
I think that's part of the...
How they probably... Well, yeah, we can take a look at that, see what we can do in that area.
Yes, I'm not sure if we're talking about the same thing, but if you look at like, you know, the actually, as I was saying, he's actually walked in, it's directly between the Knights of Columbus and the two car places there, there's actually the drainage ditch that goes out towards the...
There's a swell there that runs along the side of Brookside, between the Knights of Columbus, this would be across the street.
Can we go to page four with me on the site plan? So you'll see the, the contours, the shadow?
Okay, I want four.
So starting at the intersection of Halleck, right in Locust, you've got the beginning of the drainage ditch, a swell along that side of Halleck Road. So as I continue to the left, I come to my entrance, I've got a culvert that's crossing underneath the entrance there, a little catch basin down there, and then it continues , I guess, to the left along our property front. Where specifically are we talking?
Where it says J and J Industrial LLC, basically...
Yeah, I thought it was over here, yeah.
The Greenie and Utility Plan, probably right around the A and J Plan.
Yeah.
And it runs, it runs literally from, from the...
On the north side of the street or the south side?
South side.
It's a lot, a lot line between...
There's an assistant...
And that's Everland RV, that one, and J and J.
Are their plan, be realigned to get this swell, and this swell, to come to the same point.
This looks like the front Knights of Columbus here, part of the shore, but the swell I'm talking about, it's always wet, it's literally from Brookside's parking lot on the west end of it, and it's probably about eight foot across, and goes right, literally like right from the street, all the way to the back. I don't know if you can tap into that.
This project is also in part of the board.
Yes.
To the backyard.
Well, for the backyard, but that entire site is in your jurisdiction, you're probably going to go and hold more buildings in the back.
So you're suggesting it might be a potential connection point for us to...
Well, it's a way to get rid of the water on the tree.
Natural swell that runs somewhere.